We can call this meeting to order.
You're good.
Jake, roll call please.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion we approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Communications. I know that we had received Indiana Township trustee resignation. I know that we've also received, I believe, all of us numerous, whether it's calls or emails and the Pella Rec Center, an opposition if the city does come to ask for funds. Anybody else?
Nope.
Nope, that's it.
Alright. Public comments. This is the portion of the agenda during which we can hear any public comment that is not on the agenda. These could possibly come future topics on future agendas. Is there any public comments? Anything online?
Morning, I have a public comment.
Okay.
My name's Andrea Dykstra. I'm the director of a Challenge B homeschool co-op for Classical Conversations in Pella. And we're actually in class right now, so I've got my class behind me. And we are teaching mock trial this semester and are looking for permission to use the courtroom on Saturday, April 22nd this coming month, late morning to early afternoon.
Okay Andrea, I believe that you're on the agenda. We'll discuss that a little bit later, but I do appreciate you saying.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Anything else? Rich?
Yep.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, say your name and.
Rich Lambert, Indiana Township trustee. We got a letter here in the last week or two about, I assumed it was from the county, I assumed maybe it was a decision here about us becoming employees of the county, trustees and the clerk. And we aren't compensated, so they're talking about taxes and stuff. I don't understand how that's all going to work, other than a lot of paperwork for a lot of people. And is that done deal? Is that going to happen, or is that coming up later? I just, I didn't understand all I know about it.
Yeah.
We are having our meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday at six o'clock here. And so we'll have more instruction for you because you are allowed to get paid fifteen dollars a meeting. So I can go over all that with you and your clerks, your townships. We're going to have one big countywide meeting here to go over all that paperwork. Okay?
Thank you. No one else? Move on to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for today's consent agenda.
I move we approve today's consent agenda.
I second that.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Onto business. Item up number one is discussion legislative update from Kelly Myers, which was, who's with Skinner and Paskey. Kelly, are you on?
I had to unmute myself, sorry. Yep, I'm here. Hello, everyone. I'm coming at you live from the Iowa State House and got a number of bills to go over. The Capitol is abuzz as this is the final, well, second funnel is, excuse me, I'm just ringing. It's the week of second funnel. And during second funnel, if your bill has not passed out of the originating chamber and over to the other chamber, passed out of committee, it dies. And that applies to policy bills, appropriations bills and Ways and Means bills. So the tax and spending bills are not subject to that deadline. So lots of policies moving around the State House in a flurry to try and get passed. One of the big bills that was passed by the House last year was the eminent domain bill. That's House File 565, it was amended. And the House, it pretty much in its original state, put up an obstacle that these liquid carbon pipelines would almost be impossible for them to come into Iowa. It was amended and it still requires ninety percent voluntary approval by landowners before eminent domain can be used. That is now passed the House and has gone over to the Senate and has been signed to three senators over there. But it is a policy bill and if it doesn't get out of the Senate Commerce Committee this week, it will die. No, nothing really dies in this house, in this building, because if leadership decides to take it up, they can always bring up a leadership bill or put it in an appropriations bill, which is often done around here. But that specific bill as a vehicle to move the issue of eminent domain would die if it does not get out of committee. So it's kind of in a wait and see pattern here. Actually, everyone goes home on Thursday, so while this is the final week and second funnel deadline is technically Friday, everyone goes home on Thursday afternoon. So we'll have to see how that ends up playing out. I know that you all are interested in tax bills and property tax. So we have several property tax bills in the Senate. Senate File 550, which increases state sales tax to seven percent and gives a portion of that to the constitutionally passed, they call it I-Will, but it's the water quality endeavor for the state. That is out of committee in the Senate side. It amends local option sales taxes. It transfers a special amount of sales and use tax to be put in that account under Iowa's Code Section 423B, which is the lost section. So it allocates money to that account in a similar fashion, but it eliminates the local option sales tax. It strikes local vehicle tax and instead authorizes cities and counties to expend special sales tax and use tax revenues. And those would be deposited in the local option sales tax account. You know, increases some different property tax credits, homestead property tax credit and the homestead property tax exemption, the elderly property tax credit, as well as the military property tax credit. And also it amends TIF in a way that if wind energy conversion property is subject to special valuation, that foundational property taxes of the school district shall not be subject to that division and the property tax revenue shall instead be paid to the school. So that's an amendment and that it's a big, like seventy-page property tax bill. So it's really comprehensive. And Senator Dawson has said that his division is that that is in line and will work in conjunction with his other property tax bill, which is now out of committee, it's Senate File 356. And that is a bill that, you know, deals with county and city property tax budgets. And it restricts when counties can enter into leases, lease purchases, reduces the threshold amount that which a county can enter into debt or leases by thirty percent. Requires annual financial report on all bonds, notes, etc. Has a levy rate limitation of three dollars and fifty cents for the first one thousand dollars. Out of, excuse me, three dollars and fifty cents per thousand and up to three ninety-five per thousand for rural assessments. That bill, yeah.
Got a question regarding the wind and energy and the schools and everything. Has there been a lot of pushback from those counties that have, you know, received some of that funding? I know like Mahaska County, you know.
Oh, yeah. There's been a lot of pushback on both these bills.
Okay. There's no amendments, nothing in that, in that order.
Well, so I'm kind of getting to that. It's, it's, these have kind of stalled. So they passed in the Senate. Senator Dawson is very passionate and determined on these bills. But as you know, there's two chambers up here and the House has its version of House File 1, which has not moved since subcommittee. Now, it's in Ways and Means, so it can just sit there until the very end and they can pull it up and do something. There's no deadlines on that bill. I just heard this morning as I was asking around about, hey, what's the House going to do on property tax? And apparently there was some meeting last week, but I don't know who that meeting was with and I'm going to try and find out some more about it. And if, but they're just kind of like kicking around like, what are we going to do? So keep in mind that we had income tax cuts last year. And, you know, leadership in the House has been quoted as saying that they want to see how those tax cuts are going to play out. And the State House just passed a school ESA program, which will be cost like nine hundred million dollars. So I think there's some hesitancy on, at least on the House's side to see like, okay, how is this going to play out financially? Are we going to be able to do property tax reform this year at all? The Senate is very determined to do that. The governor did mention property tax reform in her state of the state address, but it's not really populated up because she's had so many other priorities this year, which she's going to successful at. So we have those two bills in the Senate. And it's really kind of a, let's wait and see. They're going to have to start working together and at this point, they're both kind of in a vacuum on this. Like they're working on their own stuff and they haven't come together to say what they think they can both agree on, which side can, you know, what parts of each bill can they agree on? And I believe that Senator Grassley, or excuse me, not Senator, Representative Grassley, Speaker Grassley in the House has indicated that he does not have interest in funding the I-Will program, which is the water quality constitutional amendment this year. You know, that was passed in 2010. I think the Senate feels some urgency to do something to get that funded. The House has, I think, kind of taken this like, well, we have income tax, so let's see how that plays out. And maybe this isn't a good time to fund that. That's just speculation frankly. I, I've got to, you know, we're just going to have to see how this all reconciles. And that is coming because we are now counting this week, five weeks away from the PDM ending. End of April is when everyone is supposed to be done. And so at this point, we have not even seen any budget bills introduced yet. The Senate Republicans announced an overall target of eight point eight billion, which is the same as Governor Reynolds, but the House has yet to announce what their overall targets will be. And so they'll have to agree on these tax issues before they will move forward. And at this point, we don't have an agreement that I know of. I know, Mark, you've talked about coming up here and talking with Barb. And now that I hear that there have been some additional discussions, I'm going to hit her up and see about when she may have some availability to do that. Because it's getting more ripe to have those discussions.
That sounds great, Kelly. Let me know when.
Yeah, yeah.
Already the compensation board bill, both the House and Senate, they've been working on that. Can you give us an update?
Yep. So House File 314 is the compensation board bill. There's been, oh, no less than four compensation board bills this year. Everywhere from striking it all together to allowing the board supervisors to eliminate it, to keeping it, to, you know, all these different ideas. And so I think where it's going to land, House File 314 did move through Senate Local Government yesterday. They had hoped to have an amendment to work on and pass in committee, but they didn't get it done in time. So Senator Flemish says that they're going to amend, they're going to have a strike after amendment, which means they're going to bring the bill up, they're going to eliminate everything in it and they're going to substitute it with language that they, you know, a whole entire amendment. And what he indicated yesterday at the committee meeting, what that would look like was that they will keep the compensation board. They will not allow the board of supervisors to eliminate it. They're going to create a show your work, if you will, element to the compensation board. They're going to have to, you know, show documentation of salaries that are relied upon and argued for the basis for increased salaries. There's going to be some sort of study. I'm not really clear on how in-depth, but he said like a statewide salary data survey that will need to be relied upon. And there'll be other features to it as well, but he did not elaborate. So he ended, I got the impression that LSA was going to put that together. And they may even end up saying that ISAC, because I know ISAC has a lot of this information, that it needs to be gotten from ISAC. I don't have the language yet, so it's hard to say exactly who that's going to come from. And there's also going to be a floor, if you will, on elected officials' salaries. So, you know, if the assessor makes X amount of money and they leave and then the new assessor comes in, the new assessor picks up at that same amount. That is also going to be part of the bill. So again, I haven't seen the amendment as soon as I get it, I can send it, yeah.
Kelly.
You mean, yeah. Assessors.
Elected.
Yeah.
Elected officials.
Yeah. Because you said assessor, so, but yeah, so elected.
Oh, that's my bad. Yeah, so electives, yes. Board deals with electives. I just picked one out of my head and that was the wrong one to pick, so.
Treasures.
So.
Any update on the treasures bill?
Yes, are you trying to rush me along, Keisha? Yes, I'm getting there.
Get topics, because I know that that was something that we've been asking about.
Yes, so House File 344 is the county car tiling bill. And it has moved through committee, so it's going to remain eligible for debate. But Senator Dawson has told me since last fall, and he's now said publicly at committee meetings, that he sees that only passing in some sort of property tax package. He, I don't quite fully understand because he sees that passing fees to users would have an impact on reducing property taxes. I am not quite understanding that because I know from hearing the treasurers at these some committee meetings that the counties are already highly subsidizing the services that go on in the treasurer's office to perform state services. And so I'm not really sure, I mean, this bill is like an increase to ten dollars. If you're going to rely on user fee increases to reduce property taxes, listen, I'm not the end all be all on property tax, but it just seems to me that that might have to be higher than a five dollar increase. So I'm not really sure what he's thinking or if he's talking with other folks about what additional user fees that might entail. But they're really looking at a way to curb the increase, you know, just like you all get people complaining that, oh my gosh, my property taxes have skyrocketed or gone up. They're also getting that and they've indicated over and over again when they're out on the campaign trail, that people are complaining to them that the increase in our property taxes has been a number one concern. So they're trying to do something about it. And I've said all along, I've been around long enough to be here for the 2008 property tax reform. And it's a difficult, difficult thing to get your mind around, get your arms around. So, and to continue to fund local government. So we'll have to see how that progresses, but he is definitely, and he's the Chair of Ways and Means in the Senate, so it's got to get past him to pass. And he sees it as part of some sort of property tax package. So it's kind of up against that wall right now. So I know that you all are interested in EMA. There's two files, there's companion bill, Senate File 41 and House File 126. They're both out of committee. The Senate amended theirs, the Senate version had a floor and a ceiling of thirty-five cents per thousand and up to a dollar thirty-five per thousand for funding EMA services. Both bills have amended and the Senate's language has been taken out and it's that replaced with an amount sufficient to pay for those emergency services. One of the things that was mentioned at the subcommittee was as well, you know, if you have a seven cent, you know, levy right now for thousand, this would jack it up to thirty-five percent. So we don't want that to happen. So I think that's why this language was substituted. So it's a, it's an amount sufficient to pay for the services. Those bills are both live and getting teed up to be debated.
So those, would those have to be passing out of the funnel this week?
They are out of funnel, yes.
Right, okay, alright.
Yeah. There's also some mental health kind of bills that have been in the hopper this year. House File 471 deals with mental health and disability regions. It adds competency, competency-based restoration to the core service domains of the mental health and disability service regions. And it has passed the House and it's attached to the Senate file, which is also number 471. I have sent that on to Rachel and she's taken a look at it, so she's aware of that bill. They've also done some things with substance abuse. Let me pull up my list here. House File 621 requires DHS to establish a rate structure for Medicaid reimbursement for substance use disorder, residential and intensive outpatient treatment services. It needs to be assigned to a subcommittee in the Senate. You know, trying to really address the lack of mental health service providers in the state. They have a couple of bills addressing loan repayment programs. Senate File 151 is in the House Appropriations Committee this year and it allows for, it expands the mental health, excuse me, the rural mental health services provider program. Senate File 75 establishes licensure in Iowa for rural emergency hospitals. Federal law created this designation in 2020 and has allowed this new hospital designation to begin in 23. And it also requires ambulatory surgical centers to be licensed. So they're addressing a lot of different mental health and physical health issues and human resources as well. So those are the highlighted bills. I mean, there's hundreds of bills up here that I could go over, but those are the ones I kind of picked out that I thought you all would have interest in hearing updates on. Do you have any questions?
Appreciate that, Kelly.
Yeah, Kelly, just, just a couple of data points I just want to make sure I've got in my head here. You said they're proposing an eight point eight billion dollar budget.
Yeah.
Which is.
That's the targets.
That's the target last year. I just had Renee look this up, it was eight point two one billion. Is that, am I close?
Sounds right, I don't know the specific number, but yeah.
Seven percent increase in the state budget?
Definitely an increase, yeah. I don't know the specific numbers.
Be about seven, be just shy of seven percent increase in the budget. And, and just the, for the folks in the room, for the public, most of the bills you've described, and Kelly, I appreciate the summary and staying on top of all these. But I'm just listening for an overall theme and the overall theme seems to be to take more and more dollars and services and centralize those dollars, at least the control of those dollars and services at the state level. Is that a, is that a fair summary of what you're seeing up there?
Well, I mean, I will say that we're seeing a lot of bills that I think they would say they want to create uniformity in how laws are throughout the state. That's another way of framing that, that I think they would say it is, you know, so we don't have inconsistencies in one county to the next. But at the end of the day, it's taking away local control. So, yeah, we have seen a lot of bills that would infringe on local control.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing, Kelly. I appreciate that. And then, and then again, once you get some dates and times lined up, let me know and I will make a trek to the State House.
Sounds good.
Steve, do you have any?
No, but thank, thank you for the update, Kelly.
Thank you for your willingness.
No problem.
So many bills that come, you know, that they produce, to be able to keep track of them is very helpful. So we appreciate what you're doing and continue with the updates. So hopefully maybe we can have it next month. So, thank you, Kelly.
Yep, take care.
Thanks, Kelly.
Entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
A second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Onto item number two, which is a receive and file. It's regarding Marion County Zoning Commission conformity report at Atkins Urban Renewal Plan.
Miss Yon.
I'm here, yep.
See, what do we got?
So as a part of the packet that was received for you as board of supervisors to go through the urban renewal process with Pleasantville, one of the requirements was for the Marion County Zoning Commission to review the area in question or the subject area. The zoning commission did review it on March 21st. And as stated in the document on the screen, the area, the subject area in 2013, when we updated the land use plan, was not a part of the Marion County land use plan because it was already in the incorporated Pleasantville. So with that being said, there is no conflict with the Marion County Comprehensive Plan and the proposed urban renewal area.
Thanks, Miss Y, just a, and just a quick note, since the next three items, I think, are all dealing, or the next two are dealing with the Atkins project. Jake, we'll have to untable this in one of our, because I, did we table this?
Yeah.
So we'll do that next, but just so everybody is aware that one of the reasons that I wanted to do that, I had to wait for Pleasantville to have their council meeting to vote on the proposal and make sure that that passed, and it did. Jordan, am I accurate? And it passed as it was presented to the board. So there were no, there were no material changes in that plan. So just so everybody is aware, when we get to these next ones and we untable that, it's in reference to that. I'll make a motion to receive and file this, or the urban renewal plan.
Thank you.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Onto item number three is to untable, as Mark had said, 314 of 2023, the Board of Supervisors Agenda, item number 14, Resolution 2023.
I will make a motion to untable this item.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good.
Onto item number four, which is the resolution of 2023-31. So, Mark, is there any further discussion that you would like to?
Yeah, this, this follows, it's starting to set the dates. I don't know, we have any of the guys on, Nathan or Michael? No, I don't think, okay.
We don't have the.
Yeah, it, so this starts to set the, the plan in motion to establish the dates and it's just a resolution determining the necessity of setting these dates for a consultation meeting. And Jake, we've done these before where we have the school district and others and we have a, we set a date for that.
Any jurisdiction, city, school, county that creates an urban area has to have a consultation with the affected taxing jurisdictions at the local level.
Right. And what date did we, Jake, do we got May 9th? And then we've got a public hearing set in here at May 9th.
Yep, the public hearing with, in front of the board will be in May.
Yep. So all this. Right. So that's what this does, it just establishes that pattern. And I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-31.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Onto item number five, Indiana Township trustee vacancy appointments. It was brought to, before us, that Indiana Township is down to one trustee and a clerk. And so I had spoken with Rich Lambert, the current trustee, and regards to us as a board, then we now can discuss and how we're going to present this. If we want to look at, we did receive some applications. And regarding those, the application names are Dennis Myers, Dalton Stanley, Curtis Lambert and Carl Kloster. They submitted their applications. If you guys have had time to review, if you have any questions. I did speak with the county attorney in regards to the applications and if there was any conflict. I did, um, speak with the county attorney in regards to the applications and if there was any conflicts. And at this point, uh, there, there is none, um, in regarding that. So.
Okay.
So with that, what we have done in the past is we have put, we have put those names in a hat and pulled them out. So again, um, there's Curtis Lambert, Dennis Myers, Dalton Stanley, and Carl Kloster. All equal size. And in the past, Jake, we have pulled out a hat before. Is that something the board would like to do? Or do we have any other further discussion?
Jake, there's nothing else from a process standpoint.
Yeah, there's one point that I'd like to clarify. It's just, um, so these two vacant positions, um, did include on very, very simply on the board there. So you have two different, very, it's Indiana Township trustee, but you have two different terms you're filling. So my recommendation would be that you clearly identify if you're doing the term ending in two thousand and twenty-four and for that assignment of that person and then the term of two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, that's.
So the, um, so it, it, we need to know who is filling what term because in the general election of two thousand and twenty-four, the regular position that is ending in that, that person will end.
Okay.
In, also in two thousand and twenty-six, whoever has filled that position, that position will be on the ballot again as a to fill vacancy to complete two-year term to the end of twenty-six.
So my recommendation is that you clearly identify which position you're drawing the name of, if that's how you choose. No, I appreciate that clarification, Jake. Um, with, and I assume, and I didn't see anything in the application that the applicants distinguish between.
I don't believe so. I don't believe the, the applications indicated that, um, the application is, when you do it during the regular election process, um, the nomination of candidacy or the, excuse me, affidavit of candidacy indicates if you want to do the to fill vacancies or not. So in two thousand and twenty-four, if anybody new is running or these people want to run, they will have to identify which position that will be on, that their name would be on the ballot for. But in this case, I don't think any of these did. We just need to make sure we're clear.
No, I think that's, I think that's good. I think if we, uh, go in, in order here with the twelve thirty-one twenty-six vacancy and Keisha, I'm fine with the, uh, the paper.
Paper ballot.
Drawing. I don't have my hat though, so we're gonna have to use McCombs' hat. Jake, do you want to be the official holder of the hat? Oh, let's see. We need a professional doing this.
That's right. Mix them up there. So we're drawing for vacancy twelve thirty-one of twenty-six.
Right, I have drawn Carl Kloster.
And vacancy of twelve thirty-one of twenty-four.
Get to be both. Steve's hat? I was gonna say. Got any hand sanitizer or? Curtis Lambert.
Right. We do appreciate all those that did, um, put in an application. So. We need to, uh, accept those, um, so we are, we would be accepting.
Those appointments.
Those appointments, um, of, sorry, the appointments of Carl Kloster for twelve thirty-one of twenty-six and Curtis Lambert of twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Do I have a motion to, uh, make those appointments?
So moved.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
So just as an administrative follow-up for that, I see Rich is here. So Rich, you'll notify, will you notify those people or let them know? So then what I will do is I'll send, um, oath of office sheets. I'll send oath of office sheets, um, a manual and, uh, that to the clerk and then it's the clerk. notifies those people and then you have a meeting as soon as possible. You'll have to administer the oath to those people in your official minutes. And then you guys can get going on a budget right away too.
Is there a deadline for the budget, Jake?
Deadline has to be done by April thirtieth. And so you need to have a meeting and then there has to be a, a minimum of a ten-day posting at the courthouse. Once you guys bring your proposals in and then, um, have another meeting and those, you know, all meetings need to be posted with agendas specific as possible and, um, and then submitted, uh, by the thirtieth. There's, there's time, they seem to.
This guy moved. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Onto item number six, Resolution, uh, two thousand and twenty-three thirty-two. Um, authorizing Marion County to enter into a settlement agreement with, um, Tava Pharmaceutical Industries. Is there anybody speaking behalf of that or, uh? Jared, would you like to speak in regards? Is it just a formality for us?
We've, excuse me, we've, uh, attended, uh, Jake's been part of these, but, um, myself in my office trying to get caught up to speed on, uh, the, where we stand with these settlement agreements. And after, after reviewing kind of where we're at and trying to get up, caught up to speed as quickly as possible, um, it looks like there are five more settlements that have, um, come to pass and that if we want to, uh, opt in on those, that we would have five settlement agreements that we would need to sign. You know, I think that the law firms that have negotiated these, um, have done so in good faith and, uh, kind of held these companies to, um, you know, pay financially for what they've done. And it will, I think, ultimately benefit Marion County to opt in, uh, to these settlements. And so, uh, if anybody else has any other questions, uh, I can certainly try to answer those. I know one of the things that we've been asked is, you know, how much will Marion County receive? And we don't necessarily have a good answer to that just yet because there are some things that the amounts, the exact amounts depend upon, uh, such as participation and, uh, a few other things, but, uh, I think it'll be a benefit to Marion County to opt in at this time.
So Jared or Jake, this is the second series of settlements. The first one we've received the dollars on, on that.
Some.
Or some of that.
Yeah.
Okay. And how much, do you remember how much that was? Or maybe Michaela knows this.
How much we have now? Yeah, I was, it wasn't a ton of money, I remember.
Well, the total settlement, I've got forty thousand in my head.
Well, thirty-six. Yeah, I think there's maybe a hundred and fifty thousand now. Okay.
Okay. Okay, but that's in, that's in process. This is the second, uh, I don't know what to call it, Jared, but the second settlement with a different group of companies that are involved in the lawsuit, correct?
That's right. This one largely involves the pharmacies that were distributing these drugs, CBS, Walgreens, um, and a couple that I'm missing at this time, but this is, these are more the distributors of the drugs, uh, rather than the actual makers.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I have the no, no issues. I think it's something we, we should, Ja- Jason?
Originally, we kind of had some discussion on where we were gonna spend that at. I know Public Health, us, County Attorney's Office in regards to, are we just gonna kind of wait? Get all the money in at one time and then work on that again to figure out on the best use of those for the opiate side? Is that what your guys' thoughts are?
Well, I think that's what we originally discussed and I think there were, there were also some restrictions on how we could spend the money. And we weren't sure what all those restrictions were going to be. Jared, have you got any more clarification on that? Or Jake, maybe I said that, whoever knows, whoever's been on the calls.
Not yet, uh, but, uh, I know that there, uh, in the last call that I was on, there are going to be a couple of dates for seminars on that exact issue. And I will try to attend that. If not, somebody from my office will and will at least be able to gather information and distribute it. So we can know what the parameters are, what we can do with the money.
Okay, very good. So we'll probably wait sheriff until we get all that.
Really good job too with that.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, Lieutenant Kiasis from the jail was asking on like medical aided treatment, different things on, um, I'll just have him gather the research for now and then once we kind of know where that money's at, uh, go from there some.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, so this resolution, um, authorizes, we have to opt in by the April eighteenth, I believe it is. And it authorizes electronic signature of these documents.
Right.
So this was, resolution was drafted by Isaac, uh, very similar to, um, the first round that they did.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Item number seven, uh, Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-three thirty-five. Um, this is in regards to an appointment of the Deputy County Attorney Ross Gibson. It has been presented to us that, uh, currently as when we, uh, appointed Jared Harmon, that, uh, there isn't a deputy and, uh, Mr. Harmon, um, the counselor has asked that, uh, we review this. And any comments from the board or? I, I have no problem with this. I.
Jared, anything you want to add or?
I just, I think this is important for my office. I'm learning as I, uh, get settled into this job that, you know, being, uh, for continuity of government, if something, you know, if I weren't available or I weren't here, that it's important that, uh, law enforcement and others know, um, who to contact in my absence. And so I think, uh, in that regard, it's an important thing. Uh, Ross has been with our office for quite some time and I think he'll do a good job in that role.
Okay, very good. Appreciate it.
Further discussion? If not, chain a motion to approve Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-three thirty-five appointment of Deputy.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-three dash thirty-five.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Thank you, Jared. Item number eight is, um, the support of an application for OCIO, which is a broadband intervention zone and invitation. Ms. Carla, do you have?
Yes, um, the OCIO office, um, sent out what is called an invitation to qualifier and ITQ. Um, there is an opportunity for municipalities and to submit an area to be considered as an opportunity zone. What this would allow that area to do is there is no funding associated with what we're applying for right now. But a county or city can designate or school district an eight-mile radius area to be an opportunity zone. What that means in the future as broadband money comes down is that a provider, any provider who wants to apply for those broadband funding will have some type of advantage, whether that be a lower match or whether that be additional points if they're doing a project within these up, chosen opportunity zones. Um, so it's an opportunity for us, um, to do that, which, um, what we went through as I was looking at the criteria, parts of the eastern and central eastern part of Marion County have already received some broadband funding and some other previous distributions of money. So what I'm looking at, because I'm limited by an eight-mile radius, is basically the north um, west corner of the county that would go all the way south of Knoxville and east of Knoxville and then back up around. You have a map in your packets, but I did not have that for the, the thing.
That's fine.
It's basically the northeast quadrant, as much as I could try to get most of the circle. You're required to use a circle. However, if it does get chosen as an opportunity zone, it is my understanding we'll have some opportunity to kind of, um, move that is to not be a rigid circle and to be able to have some flexibility, but, but the tool that we're using for the application process only allows you to draw a circle. Um, why that area I feel is really important is it takes in the entire, or most of that Highway Five corridor, which is four-lane, parts of ninety-two, a good chunk of fourteen, as well as one sixty-three. So if you're looking at whether that be residential or commercial, um, growth and expansion, those are major highway corridors, which are good places for growth to happen. Um, and allows us, um, to be able to take parts of the county that right now do not have many options. So, um, it's, it's a hurdle. But i- i- if we do not submit anything, then none of the county would have an option. And what they told us is that, um, for counties, more than likely, we're to only submit one because you're not going to have two chosen within one geographic area because they're trying to geographically, uh, select zones across the state of Iowa.
And are you getting the support letters from people and businesses too?
And that would be the other piece of information today. I'm here to ask for a support letter from you all. But certainly if there's people online, per people in the room that either do business or have, um, staff doing work in that zone of the county, I would appreciate a support letter. Um, if there are businesses, residents located in those areas, a support letter is fantastic. What they told us is they do not want form letters, so I cannot send you out a sample letter because they don't want them to look alike. All you need to include is your name, your address, and what your issues with broadband are in that zone. That's simply all it needs to include, whether that's for economic reasons, because you're doing business or you're providing services or you're selling and need access to the internet to sell, or whether it's for healthcare, whether that's to access portals, um, for healthcare or access appointments or for education, those people that are learning online, people working from home, um, all those different kinds of folks. So simply state your issue. I do have to have it into the state by Friday, so I'm asking for support letters by Thursday. And you can either, um, go on the county website and find, uh, the development office and get my email address there. Or if you want the easier email address, um, it's Carla, C-A-R-L-A, at redrockary.com.
Thank you, Carla. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Carla. I'm, I'm gonna struggle on this one. You know that already. I mean, this was supposed to be an initiative of our governor to get broadband across the state of Iowa. Now we have to designate zones and go through another hoop for another job they've created. The Chief Information Officer of the Department of Management is probably part of that seven percent budget increase. I.
I know. I don't, I'm not here to support the game. I'm just to say, I don't want us to be left out.
You do, and, and you're right. And you just, you just nailed it. It's a game and it's a game run by the state. They've been saying broadband for how long? Is the state initiative?
Yeah, I was just at a meeting last night.
Yeah, but how long have they been doing this now? Five, six years?
Yeah, I think that what they're finding is that it's, we need it all across the state and that's the problem. I mean, look at even, you know.
Everybody knows we need it across the state. They raise the budgets, they don't take care of these issues, they create more offices and more bureaucracy. That's where the money goes, folks. Doesn't go to providing the service. It goes to providing a bunch of jobs in Polk County. Anyway, there you go. There's my rant for the day.
I apologize for the game.
Sorry.
I appreciate you staying on top of it. I do, uh, yeah.
Do we have to approve this?
I just approve a support letter in my application to the ITQ.
All right, I'll motion to approve a support letter.
It looks like your eight-mile radius is very reasonable. Yeah, second.
We won't get it now. They'll, they'll hear this recording and they'll.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Enthusiastically.
Item number nine, Resolution Two Thousand and Twenty-three thirty-seven, um, regarding request for FY twenty-three twenty-four.
You're not gonna do the same thing, are you? I've had one rant. I can have more.
Ms. Michaela, this is something that you bring, have brought to us for the last four years that I've been on the board.
Yep, yep. I feel like I repeat myself a lot this time of year. So yes, we have in Marion County one request for suspension of taxes every year. In a nutshell, if you have a resident, um, that meets the elderly um, age and income guidelines and is approved by the DA, by DHS, they may, um, be eligible to have their taxes suspended. I typically have probably two to three week requests every year uh, for this to be reviewed. Um, the one thing that I really try to make sure that everyone is aware of is that if you have your taxes suspended, they don't go away. They are not forgiven. That just means that they are literally suspended until at some point in the future that property is transferred or that person is no longer eligible. And if that should happen, then all of those taxes then become due. So.
Wow, becomes a, an economical parcel. I mean, can't afford to buy it.
It could. Certainly.
So, but we ultimately at the county level, the taxes will be paid whenever it's sold or, you know, even though if it's, um, put in a trust, is it, I mean, is there things like that that would make it ineligible?
I, I would suspect if that should happen, I think we would need to investigate that, um, to, to know the answer to that for sure. My guess is we'd probably have to consult our legal counsel. Um but again, there are income guidelines that they must meet through DHS. Um so if at any point DHS gives us the response that this person is no longer eligible. For those benefits, then they're no longer eligible for the property tax suspension. So that would maybe be the easy answer.
Let me ask this question, Michaela. If, if when this parcel. Comes back on the market. Do we have the authority, would the board at that time have the authority to forgive those back taxes so we can make it? An economical parcel again? I mean, because I'm just curious.
I I think. I think that's a discussion we would have to have at that time. Um.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it would, it would be so out of line that if somebody couldn't afford it, but if it was to go on for twenty or thirty years. Obviously, that that parcel's not gonna be worth that, that money.
Potentially, potentially. Um you know, I think when you look at things like forgiving taxes, you have to remember that. You know, you're not just affecting what we receive at the county. I mean, you're re- affecting all of the taxing authorities that are, that have been impacted.
Right.
By the suspension of those taxes. So.
But if you can't settle this, it doesn't, it's not making any money either.
Right, and and. And and that could be the case. Um you know, to me in that situation, it becomes um possibly something that maybe. You know, the city or the county should pursue like a chapter six fifty seven, abandoned property foreclosure, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Rather than just forgive taxes.
All right, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty three thirty seven.
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty seven.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michaela.
Item number ten, uh discussion action of appointment uh for Marion County Board of Health. Dan Vanderbeek to fill uh replacement of Robin Falls Graff, who has moved away. This is Kim. You have any comments or anything?
Just Robin moved away and Mr. Vanderbeek has agreed to fill that position.
Yeah, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve this appointment.
I'll second that.
Johnor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Item number eleven, which is a discussion action of Marion County Courthouse grounds. Special application for mock trial, eighth grade classical conversations. I believe that is um. Yeah, Andrea. Andrea, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I hear you, you have your class currently going on too and uh.
Yes, we do. They're here with me. It's a small class. There's four of them here with me and they are actually practicing their mock trial as we speak.
That's good to hear. Um do we have uh Jared, do you have any comments, anything uh that you heard anything regards to this? On a Saturday, the um of April twenty second.
I uh have uh received an email uh about this and uh directed her to the board. Um I know that we are, uh we have a tour currently scheduled for the same group uh Friday morning. Uh at the courthouse, so hopefully show them around and show them our court system. Um but as far as the mock trial goes, it'd be a good experience for them.
I had an issue, so. Yeah.
So the one spot on our permit application that we uh didn't quite know what to do about as far as insurance goes, I mean, we're just a small group in Pella. And we're hoping that can be waived.
Jake?
I believe she did sign the indemnity.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see an issue with that at all, Andrea. So I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Um and it's just, may I ask a question of access to the building on a Saturday?
Yes, um it was my understanding that Chris had said that he didn't have an issue with it. I.
Did he send an email this morning?
Uh he, he, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was.
Um but yeah, let me look real quick.
Yeah, he said he didn't have any issue.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we'll just make sure we.
Very good.
Somebody is there that's gonna let him in and close it up, so.
So we had a motion by Raimi and a second by McCombs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven or twelve, sorry, is a discussion action on Marion County Courthouse grounds special event. Knoxville's Farmers Market. Anybody here on behalf or online on that? I don't see, when I looked at it, I didn't see anything that was. Unique from in the past. I guess she does say insecurity, Knoxville police if necessary. I don't know that that's ever been a.
Yeah, I've never seen that before.
Yeah. So I don't think that uh. See here, restaurants um uh are you fine with the coffee connection um letting me use their restaurants?
I don't know why that's on this application.
So.
Own my business?
I don't, but it just says that.
And can't commit my business.
I don't, that's why I was like, what she has put not, oh, guess not applicable, because she says Coffee Connection will let their users, okay. Um other than that, I do.
Hopefully she's checked with my wife.
Yep, yep. She's pretty much got the date range Saturdays by uh May thirtieth through September thirtieth at eight AM. And then Tuesdays uh starting at three PM. Yeah. Again, I uh I think Chris had stated that he didn't have an issue, so.
Yeah.
No other further discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Follow up with my wife.
Item number thirteen, supervisor updates.
Well, we got mental health meeting this afternoon, or actually, yeah, about one o'clock. Uh lots of changes as Kelly highlighted from a legislative. Standpoint, uh there is a drive from the administrative side, which would be the merger of DHS. And uh public health uh to centralize the regions even more. So that will be a major topic of discussion today at the meeting. Making uh you know, for lack of a better term, a super region uh of of. Counties west of Des Moines, our counties. Um so that potential exists. We'll see what happens at the board meeting when we have that discussion. Um public health going through the same process. Kim and I had a very nice coffee meeting yesterday. Uh and discussed all of the changes that are going on there. Uh we've already seen the potential impact or the impacts currently. On public health and how that's administered, but those are going to continue with what's going on administratively within those agencies. Uh there's a meeting on Wednesday. I don't know, Kim, are you gonna try to get there? So there's a meeting in Ames. I'm gonna try to make it. Uh and be at least in the one session where they talk about more of the future of public health and see where that goes. And then, as you heard, I'll be going up to the state house as soon as Kelly gives me some dates uh to talk about all these matters. Think the biggest thing for me, and I said it during my comments, and not to, you know, beat a dead horse. But what I hear in these bills and what everybody should understand is the state is taking more and more control over the dollars. And how programs are administered. And when we say programs, what I really mean is services. And how services are administered to counties. And if you're a person that um agrees with local home rule. Which is still in Iowa, still the law, you should have a problem with that because no legislator has come out saying they oppose home rule. So you should be contacting your legislators and asking them why the state budget goes up seven percent. Our budget didn't go up seven percent. In fact, we're losing the ability and the authority to disseminate dollars the way that we see fit locally. So that should concern every voter in Marion County. That's all I got.
Uh Tyler and I had a surfer meeting yesterday and I have a herd of meeting Thursday and I, after I leave here, I gotta go to the landfill.
Um I have Iowa workforce development um continue to work as Mark has stated uh. The regions and the areas in which Iowa workforce development is um is a continued conversation. The western part of Iowa is completely disbanded from counties from Iowa workforce development. So um and our area touches those areas. So we will have further discussion there. Um I have a meeting tomorrow in regards to some of that. Also, working with legislators, also as Mark had stated um regarding. On property tax reform and uh the comp bill, comp board um bill, so that's it. Other than that. Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnor?
Hi.